Good afternoon, everybody. We are going to go ahead and get started with our committee of the whole meeting. And we will start with the first order of business with roll call. Mr. Furman.
President.
Dr. Hans. Ms. Woodruff.
Here.
Ms. May. Ms. Newman.
Here.
Mr. Lansman. Mr. Young.
Here.
Ms. Root.
Here.
Mr. Torres. Mr. Cowan. Do you need to say me too? [laughing]. Ms. Mamie Dyer. Here. Next up is public comment. And I do believe we have a public comment in the room. If you would like to come up. Would you like to do it at the end?
Okay.
Do we have any public comments online? No.
No public comments online.
Okay, thank you. Next order of business. Under Business Operations, we have the May Financial Review by Ms. Anya Eliason.
Can we do an approval of the agenda first?
Yes. Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have to do roll call for that or just? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any discussion? Then we can move on. Go ahead, Anya.
Good afternoon, everybody. I have May financials for you this afternoon. The first slide you're looking at is the combined eligibility and revenue trend for this fiscal year with the blue line going across being last fiscal year. So you can see revenue is holding fairly steady for the last several months and should continue that way through the rest of the fiscal year. It's still above last fiscal year. Even at its highest point, we're just slightly above that. Last fiscal year's bumps there were related to direct care wage pass through funding. We are now receiving the last of the direct care wage funding included in the last few months of this fiscal year with the updated rates. As always, we should continue to see eligibility go up just slightly though because the emergency order is still in place. So no one can come off of Medicaid or Healthy Michigan. Next slide, please. So this slide is just eligible, the number of eligible people. So you can see again that blue line is well below where we were, where we are now compared to last year. So that's really driving a lot of, a lot of the revenue right now and impacting how rates are being determined going forward because our eligibility is so much higher. That will change when the emergency order ends and we start to see people come off of Medicaid and Healthy Michigan. So we'll be watching that pretty closely. The state has made a commitment to make adjustments to rates as necessary if and when the eligibility or the emergency order ends so as to account for the difference in the number of eligible individuals. Next slide, please. So you're looking at asset comparison. This is from September to now. So you can see our cash and investments are up. Receivables are down. Other assets are down and capital assets are just slightly down with depreciation. Next slide, please. So these are liabilities again compared to September versus May. So you can see our liabilities are down. Due to State is up slightly. That's just an accrual. Employee payables is up slightly. And then long-term debt again is down with any payments to, on any of the bonds we have. Next slide, please. So then this slide you're looking at is May versus May. So last May versus this May. And you can see total assets is down slightly and total liabilities is down even more. So our net position is in fact better than it was last year this time because our liabilities are down so much more than our, than our assets are. Next slide. So now we're again looking at May versus May revenue comparison. So you can see our Medicaid revenue is higher than it was last fiscal year by, I don't know, five million or so at this point. CCBHC revenue is new this year, so we didn't have that at all last year. Behavioral health revenue has just about tripled. And state general fund right now is roughly equal to what we had last year this time. County funds is exactly equal as it has been. And then all other is up slightly. This is May versus May again expense comparison. So administration is up a bit based on the additions we've added since last fiscal year. Provider network expenses are up quite a bit, but that again, as I've continued to remind everybody, we planned for that and we did push out additional funding for the provider network, both in direct care staff and in clinical staff during the staffing crisis. Grants are roughly the same and then all other is just slightly different. So net income comparison again, May versus May. So you can see our total revenue is up as our, as are our expenses. So that means that our net income is down, still not, not a loss, but it's down from where we were this time last year.
Has the state made any indication when the emergency order might be lifted?
So the way the actuary did it is they interpreted it would be going through all of fiscal year 23. I'm not sure I think that's realistic, but at this point in time, because we don't really have a good end date estimate, that's what they're doing. So they're basically assuming that it will stay on. So I would say at least through the end of the calendar year. Beyond that, I honestly couldn't tell you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else have any questions?
I'm gonna stay up for the next item, so.
Sure. Next up, we have some contractual obligation items. Mr. Franklin and Ms. Flowers will be presenting on the Di Maria contract extension and additional funds for the RCC build-out. Those are two different things, I would say.
Okay. We're here to seek one-year contract extension for the Di Maria contract extension. Also, we just wanted to provide our RCC build-out update. We happy to report that we're within budget at this time. Board originally approved a $1.6 million budget and we're within budget at this time. Also, the projected completion date is October, mid-October with the longest lead time being the furniture delivery and install. We just wanted to provide some additional updates with other items required to complete this project such as furniture, cameras, security cameras, appliances, signage and other security and other miscellaneous items that we do have to purchase in order to make the project be successful. And we didn't want, we, none of those contractual agreements are over $100,000, but while we're giving the update, we just wanted to be transparent and just let the board know that although our contract amount was for 1.6 and we're under budget, there are other additional costs that goes along with this project. Ms. Flowers here is joining me along with Ms. Eliason. Just, and also I wanted to commend Mark. He's doing an awesome job of watching the day-to-day operations of this project. We've saved a lot of money in utilizing some of the existing things that we had at the building such as we had some doors from our first build-out that we were able to refurbish and use in this project as well. And just having a set of eyes on the project really goes a long way with ensuring that, you know, we're managing the project properly.
Well, I'm a supporting cast member here today. And only just to share that the project is going very well. We anticipated a, you know, end of summer opening. However, it will be, as Patrick said, the middle of October due to some of the furniture items and other items that are taking a little bit longer to get in. Just so you know, I will share that we've been very careful to have everything, every appliance, not appliance, but all of the structural pieces, the doors, the bathrooms, to be anti-ligature. There's been a great big push for ensuring the safety of our children while they're there. Even if it doesn't spell out that it's anti-ligature, then I push it back. So I just wanna be very careful. So I probably had something to do with some of that being so long. But safety is first and foremost in our decision-making. We also wanted to have a little bit of an outdoor area which we thought might be nice for children who end up staying longer than the 72 hours. It gets tough for children to just be in and for those who are able to go out and manage the outdoors. But after looking at the extensive, more time and financial component, we thought it might be better suited to wait until maybe a time in the future, maybe next year after we look at what, how well we're doing, what the needs are and decide at that point if we wanna bring it back and ask for more to do that. Because again, that's another piece of outdoor structure and landscaping and all these things that would need to make it safe and a best route or route to exit and to come back into the building without crossing traffic of new persons that were coming in. So we were just trying to really be very careful. Anytime you design a building for such purposes, you want to be sure that you're safe. And so we're doing just that. And I appreciate Mark and Patrick and Anya for reviewing the cost and letting me know what's going on, but also looking at the types of materials that are needed to design a safe structure. So we'll be continuing to do that. And again, as Patrick said, hopefully by mid-October, we'll be ready to open the door. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions coming? Mr. Cowan?
Okay. So what percentage of construction are we done with at this point, up to this point? If you got October, where are we at?
Well, at this point, I would say 75, 80%. Mainly just closing in the drywalls is all closed in on one side. They're doing inspections in order to close in the full drywall, painting, ceiling drops. And most of the structural items are already complete. It's just cosmetic work at this time. We had originally had a contract that ended July 13th. And under the original contract, Di Maria was scheduled to be completed by that date. But due to furniture lead times and things like that, Di Maria could be done. They could have been done with their project on the date that we assigned, but we slowed the project down because we knew furniture was a delay anyway.
Right. No, I know the supply chain's all messed up, but this is a $400,000, 25% increase over what we approved before. So all I'm asking for, you know, it says, it says right in what we received, the original contract amount was just under 1.5 and it's going to 1.9. So that's, that's.
Okay. You may have the old, original in your, in your contract packet.
Okay. Well, all I want, this is what.
We're not asking for any additional monies towards the Di Maria contract.
Okay. Well, that's what, that's what the form said in the, in the, what we were given.
Right. We're not asking.
So it's still.
1.6 is what we're.
It's 1.6.
Yes.
Because this says the amount of contract is 1.9.
Can I just jump in real quick here? So the, the original plan, when we had talked about doing some outdoor space, would have been an increase, but because of the time and the, and the cost, we decided to back off on that. So what you're seeing is must be an error and it's the, the previous cover letter, letter.
Okay.
So because we've decided to back off on that, the current amount that's approved is currently, is gonna, is gonna be fine.
Okay.
And the time is gonna be fine. It's really just the extension in the contract at this point because everything has been slower.
Okay.
So I apologize for that error. There was a couple of different versions of things going that, that could have easily gotten back up.
All right. Well, then just get that clarified for the meeting. If there's no increase in pricing, then that's fine. That's what, that's what I thought I was looking at. That's why I asked the questions. Because I was gonna ask you, where's the, where's the backup, you know, for it? And so, okay, that explains it. So if all it is is an extension of time, then that's fine. Okay, thank you. See, the, the board members, we actually read most of this stuff. [laughing]. Well, I do. Anything on construction or the money, I'm all over. So, you know, I may not get through all 80 pages or some other things, but this stuff I look at. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cowan's referring to what was shared in the board packet last week as part of it, but since then, they amended it is what, what happened.
I was looking at what was on the, the agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank, okay. That's fine. Okay.
Can we clarify the numbers though before we take a vote for the time extension?
So we won't be taking a vote for the actual extension today. Today we'll just be voting to recommend it for full of board approval, but we still will want the appropriate numbers.
Okay, we have time. Okay, thank you.
Yep. So we just basically have one year in the packet for extension, one-year extension.
To clarify, like Anya noted, that you're not actually voting to, you're just voting for the time extension. There's no monetary value change from the previous board approval.
Okay. So we can vote on it today? Okay. Okay. Do you have any, any other information?
No.
Okay. So given that the Business Ops Committee, we need to vote on that contract extension. So do I have a motion to approve the contract extension?
Was it to approve the extension or to move it to next week for approval?
Recommending it to move to next week for approval.
So I'll make that one.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Sports.
Okay. Can we get a roll call vote for that? I'm having a off day. Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Cowan?
Yes.
Mr. Torres? Oh, he's not here. Ms. Mamie Dyer? Yes. Am I gonna see? I think that's it. Yes. Okay. Oh, Mr. Furman?
Yeah.
Sorry. Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, thank you. Next up on the agenda is the Policy Management Committee item. So I will pass it on to Ms. Newman.
Thank you, Ms. Mamie Dyer. Next on the agenda, we have Ms. Christine Burke coming with program description.
Good evening, everyone. I know in your packet, you received a document saying, "Understanding Specialty Public Mental Health Services." Just to give you a brief history on the document, it's actually about eight years old. We originally developed it shortly after we brought in Substance Use Services and we were transitioning some other services that were in the network to our supervision. And there were questions from the Board of Commissioners about what services we actually provide in the community. So we went to our subject matter experts in our clinical teams, the Provider Network Team, SUD. And they helped create the foundation for this document. We update it twice a year. We give it to the Board of Commissioners. I think a copy was given to the board a few years ago as a reference point for talking points in the community. We keep it very high level, so it's just a brief description, community value. We also distribute it in our press kits and Dana, wherever she goes, has kits with her and information. One of the recommendations, we updated it in January, we just updated it in June. It's a working document at all times. One of the recommendations I did receive was, is it possible to add the service providers under each program? I'm trying to navigate that a little bit. We have 180 service providers. So I don't want the foundation of the document to be any larger than it is. What I am thinking about doing is creating a reference document in the back, almost like a key of its own. So there, there would be a program and a program title and then maybe a list of the providers there. I don't want people not to know what we're doing because they get lost in the number of providers. So I think it's a good idea to have that information, but I'm toying with the formatting a little bit so it is easy to use and is effective in sharing information. You will start to receive these every six months when we update them. We give it to our directors first. They discuss it with their managers. We talk about rewording, adding, deleting, and then we send that to our chief leadership and our directors to review also for content and any changes. If you ever have any questions about any of the information, you can ask Sheila and she'll pass it along to me. Any questions?
I thought we were gonna go through it. I'm sorry. Well, I thought, I thought that's what we were gonna do.
We can, if you'd like. Yes?
I think it's enough interest.
All right, we can do that. So we'll start with the initial page, which was the Understanding Specialty Public Mental Health Services. We did this section first because it was part of our advocacy initiatives when privatization and the conversation started to come about and people would say, "Well, what do you do that's different than the Medicaid health plans?" So we provided this list for them. Case management, community living supports, criminal justice services, employment supports, peer supports, housing and respite care. So these were some of the, this was some of the information that we continue to use in our advocacy initiatives and efforts in communicating with our legislators about those unique programs that would be lost if privatization occurred. Are there any questions about that? Do you want me to read each one, Malchaya? How would you like to do this? Is there preference for the board? Summary signs?
Yeah.
All right.
But. How is that administered in the mental health section? I'm assuming this is for adults or this is for adults and children?
This is for the entire, yeah, this is just a description for the entire organization.
Okay.
So I can find out, like, that's a clinical question.
Okay.
How it's actually administered for this, for me, it's just mostly giving a brief summary to the community that we provide that type of care, but I can absolutely find out from our clinical team.
Okay.
How that's administered.
I can answer. Respite is identified as a need in the person's individual plan of service. And at that time, there's a vendor that, or a provider, those respite services. So when it's identified in the plan of service, the amount, the scope, the duration of that service, then there's an attempt by the core provider to identify who that respite provider is. And that's one of our challenges, honestly, because of the workforce and then being able to provide those respite services for people that really need them. And so it's an important service. It's hard to provide because of the workforce shortage, but it also is a preventive measure so that people aren't found to be in crisis when they really just need an opportunity to have that respite. So that's how it's provided. It's provided in the home mostly and there are some cases where it's provided outside of the home, in another home or another location.
It, the service would be for the person served or for the family member?
The person served.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And it impacts the family greatly.
Okay.
And in some cases, we've been able to have family members actually provide that respite because of some of the shortages. We've had to be creative and think outside the box. But some of the challenges is when families provide that level of service, they also need to receive the training that comes with it, that the required training. So that's really critical piece. And some families wanna provide that service, but they don't wanna go through the training. So there's a challenge in that as well.
Thank you.
The Community Inclusion Section really discusses the social determinants of health. Again, areas where the public mental health system provides strong support for communities and for people we serve. So it touches, it touches on housing, employment, transportation. These are also areas that we identify or are identified in our needs assessment frequently by people we serve as being a priority for them. Again, going back to advocacy and that conversation when privatization comes up about what we offer to the community that is unique, which makes us a safety net. And then also ensuring that people know that these services are available to them for our community partners. Crisis Innovation Service Access, this is one of Dana's priorities as well, a priority for the organization. Again, we wanna make sure that people understand when, how, and where to get services. We wanna make sure they know that we have a resource and crisis center in our community. The hospital liaison position is something that was recently added. So this is an example of seven years ago, we really didn't have that position in place in the way it works now. So when we give it to our subject matter experts, they'll say, "I have a new person in this role. This is what he or she does and this is how it impacts the community." Suicide prevention and just some other information that we do. So really this page is to make sure that legislative leaders, that our community partners know that we have an access system, an access location and how people can be connected to Healthcare integration, this has been on for quite a while for us. So it really talks about our relationship with honor and the FQHC locations that are co-located with our service providers. Healthcare coordination, we, again, going back to advocacy because the premise of the integrated or the premise of the private bills are that integrated healthcare does not exist. Some of the information that I do, like I said, ongoing working, I looked at even this today and thought, "Oh, we have to put CCBHC and behavioral health homes on here." So every time we look at it, we see something different. But again, going back to advocacy, that healthcare integration is in fact taking place already. So when we hear from the health plans that this is the reason we need to privatize, we can reference back to this language. You have one? Okay.
No, that was one. Where was the CCBHCs and health homes?
Yeah. Yeah, again, it's, it's like the document, so sometimes we'll look at it, we go through, we edit, and then I look back at, I was making copies of it today and I thought, "Oh, that didn't get added in here." So those will be added in here. The SUD health homes, the behavioral health homes, and then the CCBHCs and then how that fits into our priority for integrated healthcare.
That's okay. You did say it before, but could you just reiterate again how and where these get distributed? Because I really love this. And I think this is such a, such a great document and really want to make sure that this is being accessed by as many people as possible and.
Yeah, I use this for everything, literally. We keep it in our press kits. We do keep it on our website. It hasn't been added, I don't believe, to our new website yet.
Okay.
But it does usually, we have, keep a electronic press kit on our website, but we're still in that process of building and looking for content. We also distribute it to our Board of Commissioners. We give it to legislators about once a year. So every now and then, we do this mass, especially if there's a significant change. If there isn't, if it's just we maybe moved something here or there, so to keep it fresh, we send it out to everyone in that manner. But yeah, we use this, and for the board really too, when we first gave it to the board, it was to use as a reference point. When we get calls in from the media, this is our go-to. When we get calls in from the media, this is our go-to, and then we go to whomever in the building's area of expertise needs to be sought for responses. Justice System is one of our largest initiatives in the packet. It really highlights, I think, the growth in our justice initiatives. I know Dr. Pozios is leading that, Heather is helping in serious aspects. So Stepping Up was actually, has been around for a long time, that is in partnership with the Board of Commissioners, that's where it was first led, the sequential intercept model. We continue to share across the state. We really have received national acknowledgement for the way we incorporate that. Anything else you wanna know, law enforcement, LEARN? We no longer do LEARN, but we keep it on this document because I think it's important for people to understand when naloxone first came available, that we launched LEARN and we were one of the first counties in the state to provide training for law enforcement and how to do naloxone, and then as well, how we distributed it from our organization. The department now has taken that over. Any questions? And if there's anything clinical in here that you would need reference on, you can just let me know, and then I'll make sure we get that response to you. Yeah, Malkaya?
Where's the, the Behavioral Health and Wellness Court located?
It's not, I don't think it's on here, unless it has a different title and name. So I'll check with Justice, it may be referenced, sometimes some programs have different names than the way we reference them, but I will follow up with that and check.
It looks like it's under the Criminal Justice Program Initiative, is that what you're talking about?
Oh. Oh, I see you want the district, okay.
All right. Okay.
Can anybody go there, or they have to be in that area?
Substance use is another area where, did you have a question, John Paul? Is your microphone down?
Yeah, actually, to Malkaya's point, I do know on the second part that if it's at the district level, that it would only be applicable to the individuals in that specific district court. So if it was like Clausen District Court or something like that, it would be everybody who falls within that jurisdiction. So, but that's why it's important that we have these kinds of programs in different courts across the state of Michigan, 'cause unfortunately, part of what I've seen is when these programs are in some courts, but they're not in others. As much as we'd wanna take somebody who we know needs the help, we can't because they don't fall within that jurisdiction. So, but I do know that part as far as that goes, is answering that question, but, and I have been listening in my car, so I got all the background, I've been listening to you, so, thank you.
The next section is Substance Use Disorders, which is another prominent program for OCHM in terms of community connection. So we really have been the lead, I feel, in the state in addressing the opioid epidemic and ensuring that families in our community have access to prevention. The Alliance Coalition for Healthy Communities is one of our largest prevention providers, so we have coalitions, I think we have twenty-three, that serve every community in the county at this time. They do both prevention for youth, they also do suicide prevention as part of their contract, and really have their finger on the pulse of the needs of those communities. It's generally parents, educators, community leaders, who identify the unique needs in that community and then work with the coalitions to make sure that those needs are met, because what you may need in Royal Oak may look different than what you need in Rochester, may look different than you need in Oxford. And so we rely on the coalitions a lot for their input in terms of our prevention efforts. A lot of the Do Your Part Be the, or Do Your Part Be the Solution, that was a state program, so we receive funding and work with ACHC on that in terms of prevention messaging. I already spoke a little bit about LEARN. My Strength is an online application that is funded through SUD, so it's an online mental health substance use service application. I believe last time we checked, I'm looking over at Suzanne, I think we had a little over fourteen hundred people who currently use that application for free in our county. We're, actually, we're just talking about getting the numbers, last time we had the numbers in comparative to McComb and Wayne, we were a little far ahead percentage-wise. We do share information with About My Strength, it is a standard ad, so to speak, in our newsletter that goes to the people we serve, and then we have little business cards, which on one side have the My Strength application, on the other side have, have information about access to services. Some of the other things that are very unique to us, the RISE Center, which has been around now for six years, and again, this, this document is meant to highlight those things that are unique to the public mental health system, but also very unique to our county, and demonstrates our role as a leader in meeting the needs of the community. The SUD Health Home is on here, I'm glad to see that, the Sober Support Unit, which has been around for a few now, few years now. So any information that we have related to SUD services, I know there are some changes coming down the line in terms of direction from the state, and then Kristy and the SUD team will work with us to make sure when we update it again in December that that information is added. And then there is Tricia's Training and Education, all things training, all things you need to know about what is happening in our community as far as people who offer, like, for example, Sherry Rushman does our Living Hope series, and there's the Youth Mental Health, there are any of those required and mandatory trainments, trainings by the state, so she does a really nice job in highlighting not only what we do for the network, but a lot of these trainings are available, trainings that are available to our community, so the outreach and that ripple effect and making sure that people have those tools they may need if there's a suicide prevention, if it's working with a youth who might be having a mental health challenge, how do you respond, how do you react, and then how do you connect them back to services? And then, of course, the last one is Chaka's Veterans, who Chaka just does a really amazing job for the time he has been here, that position originally earned, I believe, is grant-funded by the state and was new three or four years ago, and his impact in the community and really helping us build relationships with the veterans community has been remarkable. He's always coming to me and saying, "Hey, can we do this? Hey, can we do that?" So we try to piggyback a lot of our veterans events on our existing events so that we're not getting everyone too tired with all those events we do in a month. We look to see, how can we, what are we doing now, and then how can we use that and be more efficient with our time and pair those outreach efforts together.
Does anyone have any questions for Christine? Thank you for taking the time to go through this, it was most beneficial.
No, no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, up next on the agenda, we have other business. We are going to start with Mr. Torres going over the bylaws and board policy, where we are with that.
All right, thank you. So we have the bylaws and the board policies to date, so these are all of, this is reflective, these documents are reflective of all of the changes, additions, and all of the input that we have all agreed to up to this point. So today, what we're looking for is, is a approval of the changes that we've made to date. Now, so if we've gone through this, we make approvals, and then if there's a change that comes up, then, then we have to reapprove all of the, well, depending upon if it's the bylaws or the policies, we have to reapprove that entire document again, and then we have to wait five days, when we make the changes, then we have to wait five days, then we approve it, and then after that, then it can actually go for a full board vote. So when we approve the changes, even if we didn't agree to some of the changes, we're agreeing that the changes were, are reflective of what the board has, has agreed to at this point. And as you know, at this point in the process, we're about nearly a year in, I think, since the committee originally formulated, and probably about three or four months in since we've taken it on as a complete board, that we don't always agree on, on all of the suggestions that are made, but the consensus is what we go with. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna go first with the, the board, bylaws is up first, and then I know that there's gonna be a change, a recommended change on the policies that was brought forth to my attention, so we can discuss that as a board. But I'll go first to the bylaws and if anybody has any changes or something isn't reflective of, of what they, we had agreed to previously before. So is there anybody who has anything on those bylaws? Okay, so I would, if, if we don't have any changes, then we can move forward with approving. I would need a motion, correct? Okay, and this is a full board, right? 'Cause it's the entire board, not just the bylaws committee for approval?
I believe that's correct, 'cause you reviewed them all with the full board.
Yeah, with the full board, so, okay. So if I could get a motion on the, on the bylaws, and then if, if this does pass, then we could have it prepared to go to the full board meeting.
Motion to approve the, the bylaws?
I'll support the motion.
Any, any comments? Okay, can we do by hand vote, or do we have to roll call?
I'll roll call it.
Okay.
Ms. Woodruff?
Yeah.
Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Ms. Newman?
No.
Ms. Namie Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Root?
Yes.
Mr. Cowan?
Yes.
Mr. Torres?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, all right. So now what we're gonna move on to now, we still have to approve this as a full board in a board, board meeting for it to be the actual changes to the bylaws. But what I'm gonna move now to is to the policies, and I know I already do have one suggestion changed, so I'll entertain that in a moment, but if anybody has any, anything else. But one thing I wanna be clear on is that though this has taken a year and about, we wanna make sure we get it right, you know, it's our bylaws and it is our policies, and that it's discussed and it's debated and it's talked through, and I really appreciate that you have all done that and taken it with such seriousness, not only committee, but this board in general. So the last time we, we spoke about policies, we focused on the two last sections of that, where we talked about the conflict of interest policy, and I know Ms. Hooper, Mr. Hooper has been extremely helpful with all of this, and I know that there was one under, I believe it's the ethical behavior, page twenty, and I'll open it up to Ms. Root, I know you had a suggestion in, in that arena.
Sorry, thank you. So I apologize, I didn't bring this up while we were talking, and I might push us back a bit with it, but I really wanted to, to take time to think about it. So if you look at the second bullet point on page twenty, I believe what we added was, okay, you read, shall not discriminate because of race, ethnicity, color, religion, age, sex, sexual orientation, and then gender or transgender status. So what I am recommending is that we say, go back a bit to sex, and then in parentheses, say including sexual orientation, gender identity, or expression, and pregnancy, because that covers the different, different levels of this, right? You know, there's, there's four main categories that can be seen as umbrellas to be inclusive, and you have sex assigned at birth, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, and gender expression. So I just feel like if we wanna be inclusive and make sure, you know, that we're covering it, that is my recommendation for how to word it, because transgender status is included under gender identity, if that makes sense. I know it's a little confusing.
So the change, can you restate the change then?
Yes, definitely, I can also write it down too.
That you're suggesting.
So where it says sex, put in parentheses, sexual, sorry, including sexual orientation, gender identity, or expression, and pregnancy.
Or expression, and then, now, so that would be, so then we would get rid of, okay, so, so we would, technically, we'd get rid of this, even though we're restating sexual orientation, just for the purposes of, as I look at this document, sexual orientation, gender, transgender, and instead we put in, including, with parentheses, including sexual orientation, gender identity, or expression, and pregnancy?
Yes.
And if I could just ask, excuse my, I guess, ignorance, does that, when you say pregnancy, is that, is that what it means, like pregnancy?
Yeah, I questioned that, if, if that's applicable here, but towards the end of the sentence, it does say, okay, so OCHM board commits themselves, okay, shall not discriminate, okay, and will work to prevent and eliminate such discrimination in rendering services and work assignments and employment practices, and we know unfortunately that those who are pregnant have faced discrimination, right? We don't have to add that if, if we vote against it, but I did take that from the U.S. Equal Employment Opportunity Commission's website.
Yeah, and I think you had mentioned you had got this off the EEOC website.
Yeah.
Okay. So this is the language that they use?
I just see it as being inclusive.
Right. And I don't see pregnancy listed anywhere else, does anybody else?
That is certainly as, as inclusive as we can make it. And I, I think it's not an unreasonable change at all, I think it's an excellent change, attracts the language appropriately.
Mm-hmm. Okay, and then, so, okay, so if we adopted this language, it certainly is inclusive, and I wanna go back to the idea that, you know, I wanna get it right, and I know, you know, I, I would like to move forward and be able to get this passed and all of that, but what is certainly important is to be able to get it right. So if it pushes us back a little bit, certainly, you know, I think we all are open to that. But the language then seems to expand more on what we had had originally, and I know there was some debate when we talked about this before, about what kind of verbiage we were gonna use and to that, all of those things. I don't see pregnancy anywhere here, and I know that certainly is something that, that I know we, we probably should cover, or we should cover, 'cause it is, you know, it, it is a thing, it is real, that does happen. So, you know, I do, I support that. But does anybody have any tweaks, or is anybody against, or thoughts? And Mr. Hooper, if we do make the change though, and so I just wanna be clear, 'cause we did do the, the bylaws, and then we, we are gonna make this change to the policy, but we would probably wanna pass the bylaws and the policies at the same time before, for the full vote in a board meeting, and, or would we, would it be okay to separate it one in July and, and one in August, if we do make the change? And/or if we make this change, I know there's a five-day waiting period until we can re- I know there's a five-day waiting period until we can re-review it and then accept the changes as a board. And if that's the case, are we not able to accept the changes on policies at the next board meeting and then later on down the agenda, approve it by the full board?
You could not later on the, on the same agenda approve them. But there are, there is no reason that we could not separate the two documents for approval. In addition, just as, as an observation, the, the things that we're adding now are the, the full language, but that full language is protected under the EEOC. It's also protected under the ABA. So it is not necessarily the case that we have to add those things to the policies. We are doing this to be as thorough as possible, but it's not necessarily the case that we have to do it.
So, so what you're saying is that the EEOC then would obviously supersede our policies anyways? So, and it would be covered by that, okay? Anybody have thoughts then, or... The question I guess that I have is, do we want to be thorough and put that in there? Or do we want to say that it's fine how it is and knowing that the EEOC language would supersede anyways? Okay.
I think we make the changes, because the board policy, you know, when people see our policies, they don't read in EEOC. I mean, with all, I mean, that's the fact, but they don't see that. What they see is what we write. So I would have no problem. And I don't see why we can't, we could vote on the bylaws at the next meeting and all the help, all the board policies, except for that one, and then do the follow-up, and then we have a comprehensive, we have what we want. So that's, that's an option we would have, so, from my view.
Who was next? Was Malkaya? Someone have their hand up? Oh, oh, okay. Nope. So, okay, so, so Mr. Cowan makes a good point. This is what people look at when they look at our policies and they look at our bylaws. We've spent as much time as we have, as my opinion, is we spend as much time as we have. I want to make sure it's right. And so we could approve the bylaws at the, the board meeting and then approve the changes. I think we could do that at the board meeting, but then the next month, we could then formally approve the policies, right? So...
Do that.
Go ahead, Ms. Newman, sorry.
We certainly could do that. Mr. Cowan, the suggestion is an excellent one. He is correct. People will not see the EEOC document. We don't refer to it. It is something that we operate by, obviously, and it is part of our HR policies. But it is not part of the board policies, and this is a board policy to be seen publicly for that purpose. So there's no reason not to make those changes.
Malkaya, Ms. Newman?
Don't we have a study session this month?
Yeah, I think we, we do, so... Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to suggest that we take the vote at the study session.
I think we have to do it at a full board meeting though, don't we? Correct? Is that correct, Mr. Hooper?
Actually, I don't know if that's the case. I would have to look at that.
Okay.
I can, no, we have, this board has done some approvals, to Mrs. Newman's point, at board study sessions. But you typically like to keep them at the general board meetings. But it's up to the board's discretion.
My only concern that I think of, as I kind of think out loud, is that if we didn't do it at a, with something as important as policies, right? I don't want anybody to look at it and say, you know, you put it in, not a board meeting. So, you know, to give any, any, any view of looking at it as though it was done, you know, in a separate meeting that wasn't, you know, in a full board meeting. But that's just kind of my thought, but that's probably from past experiences I've had with other boards. So I don't necessarily know that that's going to be the case here. But I, you know, I'm open either way, so. Maybe we can, well, I guess we should really think about it, because they would be then approved later this month. So do we want to see if we can do, do it at the study session? Or would we like to wait for the board meeting?
I would say if we can do it at the study session, let's do it there. I mean, they're public meetings, all three of them, so. It's not like it's a closed session, so, yeah.
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Young.
At the board meeting, you could ask everybody what they want to do. I mean, because we got most of us, but, and I don't know, I don't know what kind of turnout we'll have. You know, sometimes study sessions in the summertime are not as well attended. Just thought, because you could bring it up with everybody at the board meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's bring it back up, sit on it. I like the idea though, of actually doing it at the study session. My only concern was that, you know, that, that bit of somebody seeing as though it wasn't at a full board meeting. But if we talk about it at the full board meeting, you know, and then say, we're going to put it over the study session, and these are open meetings, right? So like Mr. Young says, that these are open, people can give a public comment, you know, we're online, we're doing the whole bit. So I would just ask, because we're going to do the study session. Do we do, will we do the study session online though? Could we make that available? We generally do do it, don't we, online, where it's available like, like this? Okay, so then that, that keeps it open, in the event that anybody wants to tune in. Okay, all right, so then I think we, we have a plan. Now, do, are, does, does anybody have any objection to the language then? Does it sound right? Is it the way we want it? Go ahead, Ms. Newman?
I don't have an objection. I want to thank Ms. Root for bringing that to our attention. Because I didn't know. Thank you.
Right, so we, you guys, Sheila, you have the language the way that she wrote it or stated it, okay? So we'll make that change. Everybody will get a copy that they'll be able to review. And then we can move forward to the board meeting, approve the bylaws. And then if all agree, then we can move to the study session and approve the policies, so. Great, so, all right, I appreciate that, Ms. Root. And it seems like we have a path forward, so, thank you. Is there a vote then? Do I have to have the vote, or there's no vote, right?
There shouldn't be a vote, because you guys didn't accept the change, well, you can accept the changes.
Yeah, because we have the accepted changes, and then, would we accept the changes as amended?
I'll defer to Mr. Hooper, but I think you can do that.
Yeah, you can accept the changes.
Okay, so I need a motion to accept the policy, the OCHN policy documents as amended?
So moved.
Support, so it's been moved and supported, so roll call?
Mr. Cowan? Ms. Root? Mr. Young? Ms. Namie Dyer? Yes. Ms. Newman? Ms. Woodruff? Dr. Hans?
Yes.
Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Mr. Torres?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we will move on to the next order of business, which is discussing the Metro meeting dates. Mr. Lansman is not here right now, but it looks like the proposed date for the Metro meeting is September 29th. And this is the one that OCHN is hosting.
That's correct. It's a scheduled board study session. And as talked about at the executive committee meeting, to make it a hybrid format. And I did hear back from Detroit Wayne and McComb today, and they are holding that date. So they both had agreed, but obviously they have to go in front of their board for that too.
Great, thank you. The next item is just a reminder about the CEO evaluation survey. You have until tomorrow, Tuesday, the 12th, at 11:59 PM to complete that. Everyone should have gotten a link, and actually another reminder link was sent out today in your emails. So be sure to check that if you have not completed that yet. And then just as a reminder, moving on from that, those, the data from the survey will be compiled and presented to the committee, excuse me, the CEO evaluation committee, who will discuss on July 28th the results and make the determination to be provided to the full board during that study session. Yes.
Where did the link go? Because I was looking under documents, under the 2022 evaluation, and it's not in there.
It should have gone to your OCHN email.
Okay, all right, okay.
I believe that's the only place that it would have been sent.
All right.
If I sound correct? And if you haven't received it, you should be able to reach out to Edna White, and she should be able to get you another link for it. I'll defer to Dana about Edna, but she's out of the office.
Edna is, we're deferring it to her team, Jerry Lyons and Glenda, to manage it. Edna's had to leave town for a family emergency.
Thank you.
I, I think there was a reminder email too, with the link that went out this morning, so, from Jerry.
That did come from Jerry Lyons, yes.
So it should be there.
Okay, any other questions about that? Thank you, everybody. The next item is the legislative lunch.
This is going to be a part of Christine's update as well, but I think I'm deferring to the executive committee again. We talked about it just as a reminder to encourage board members to attend. And if any board member would like to attend, because also on that date, we have the board study session. And if they wanted to come in, I could reserve a space on the first floor for board members to work remotely if they're allowed to. And then you could attend both meetings that day, but you just let me know.
So just contact you if board members want to attend?
Yeah, and then we can provide them a workspace somewhere here and then to work remotely if they, if that's what they choose.
Great, thank you. Yes, sorry.
Just a real quick too, I believe we talked about at the executive meeting of the importance of it at this time, because of everything happening in Lansing. And we've been given, you know, statements saying that things are going to be okay. But I know there is still concern about lame duck period. And so initiatives that we would take to get through to our legislators, whether it be email, you know, or directly going and advocating with our legislators at locations and things like that. So just making sure that anybody who's not aware or who's just kind of on the fence, has, you know, somebody from the community, our community in their ear, telling them some of the points of importance. So, so, you know, the nub of it was, we were hoping to get as many board members as possible there to participate. I'm certainly marking my calendar as well and trying to make it.
Thank you, Ms. Torres. There are no further comments or questions about that. Christine, if you want to come up and talk about events and outreach?
Hello again. Those of you who work close with me know that I get really excited about some things. We'll say this, I was working on this report, and after going back, it's really reflective of the positive outcomes of the ongoing outreach and being present in the community. The things that we're being invited to, the things that we are participating in, not only in a leadership role, but also as a resource and support. The first one, the classic three-on-three basketball tournament, which we had never heard of before. Dana had a meeting with Pastor Sewell. It's been part of our ongoing efforts to connect with the faith-based community. So it was our first time there, passing out information. The Orion Library, we were asked to just set up a display for the week, and then people could come in. We go in every couple of days. Austin on my team goes in every couple of days and makes sure that the brochures are still there. So we were really appreciative of that opportunity to be present in the community. Some of these will be, not be on your copies, they're on mine. Plays with a lot of the documents we present for my team. They are constantly evolving. So between the time that I gave this information to Sheila, I think on Tuesday and Friday, I had four new events. The one particular with the Pontiac Family Wellness, that I received a flyer from Honor. We were notified Friday at noon, and we were there Saturday at noon. And I would be very remiss if I didn't mention, that only happens because of the people who volunteer in this organization, specifically Access and Customer Services backs my team up all the time. I've never had anyone, I've never been in a position where I didn't do a last-minute call and have them say, yeah, we got you, we'll be there. So those things always make me really happy. Zoo Fest was new for us. There were about 500 people, I was told, that were at this event, at the zoo. They used, they had the last year, I believe in Novi, somewhere on the west side of the county, they moved to the zoo to try and reach more families. The Parent Empowerment Drop-In Center, this is another really exciting opportunity for us. I believe Dana was at an event. She met a woman who has a nonprofit organization that reaches out to families. And so from that evolved that our Access and our Customer Services team are going to be onsite, passing out Access information. The second and fourth Monday, I think Access is taking the first Monday, and then Customer Services. We're going to, we have that mapped out through the end of October, and then we'll see if it needs to go beyond that and evaluate the success of that as well. Minority Mental Health Forum is tomorrow, so if you can be there. Suzanne and her volunteers, I don't want to miss anybody but Nadha Khan and Malcolm, Monakam and Malkaya, who else? Kaylee, yeah, I'm looking at Suzanne. Suzanne's been leading this effort. This, I believe, is the fifth year. It is one of the best events we have in this building. I think it's been five years now. We're actually, Malkaya had introduced the idea to us. And we have some speakers coming in on a national level. We really think a lot about being inclusive. So affirmations will be here with the resource table. We're trying to cover all of our bases and make sure that we're representing everybody in the community. Our lead drumming group will not be here this year, but we have some exciting things too. So if you can log in, we are doing it hybrid. I highly recommend it. I think it's always really impressive to see the commitment and passion, compassion that our staff has on this subject in terms of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Ten, ten to noon. Of course, our voter work groups continue. We had planned to prior to the primary, and then we'll have to. This is being led by Person Served, the whole presentation. Mark from Customer Service leads the group. And we will be doing this presentation at the Your Voice, Your Value Conference, but we've also been asked to do the presentation at this year's recipient rights annual conference. The Mental Health Fair Rochester Coalition will have a table there. The Family Market Days, another example of outcomes from strong relationships. The Health Division is having these special market days targeted toward families and called and said, can you guys be there on these days to help ensure that families have access? It aligns with our priorities and ensuring that families and children and families are learning more about us and knowing where they can go for support. NAMI State Conference is in Oakland County this year. Dana will be on the panel, and then Adam and Heather will be doing presentations. So we have two Oakland County workshops that will be held during the conference. Legislative lunch, you've talked about a little. I'm working with our legislative consultant in terms of recruiting. Usually we get a lot more RSDPs about the week before, because some of the legislators are on vacation. We strategically pick the 28th, because it's just a few days before the primary. We will be inviting the local media, because there is that conversation in our state in educating legislators, and include candidates as well, about the mental health needs of our community. And so this is an opportunity really for us to highlight what's happening here and to recognize it as the event as a tool to educate legislators and our leaders. Do you have any questions about that? Church in the Park was introduced to us by Malkaya, so we are excited about... that, a school district resources, Your Voice, Your Value really encourage the board to be present if you can, this is a pinnacle event for the people we serve, we honor our achievement awards, and their goals and aspirations of the people we serve, we also honor peers, they're very excited about this recognition, it's kind of really symbolizes everything we do, in terms of helping them le-lead the lives of their choosing, so if you can, we are gonna do it hybrid, um, I would really like to see people there in person, if possible, I will say that years past, all things pre-COVID, um, we used to have this event at a hotel, we are gonna have it here, but in the end, there, there was always this group photo of our board and our award winners, and it just really having that presence, I think represents the value and their value for our organization, so that is my real strong pitch for that event, because it is so important. We are scheduled to present, we being Dana, to the Board of Commissioners on August seventeenth, we were scheduled in May and in June, we were on the agenda for both months, uh, there were some situations beyond our control that we were asked if we could move to August, um, I did speak with Vice Chair, uh, Marsha Gershenson, so she assured us that we will be on the calendar in August to go over those important outcomes from dollars they've given us, and how we're utilizing them with the mental health navigators and other programs, and really just an overall general of what's new at OCHN, uh, Senior Market Days, it kind of ties back into the Health Division, they are having one program for families, one for seniors, I did wanna give just a brief update, uh, last time I checked on the twenty-second, we had about two hundred and eighteen persons receiving SUD services that have been vaccinated specifically through the SUD clinics that are hosted on-site, I had some conversations, too, it's, it's really not even just that people, just having us in there and talking about it, what I'm hearing is that there's a pharmacy next to a treatment center, that even if people say, "Don't get vaccinated when they're at our clinic," that they are having and thinking about, and they may be going across the street to the pharmacies and local pharmacies, so again, always being cognizant of the ripple effect of our work beyond what we can look as a primary outcome, and then just the list of press releases that we will be sending out, specifically the new board members, too, we were waiting for those photos to be taken, so that we can include it, and I know the press release has been approved, it's just we're, um, have it in our lined-up order of when we distribute it to the media, based on priorities and other things going on in the agency. Any questions?
Yeah.
Just one comment, uh, if you could, up under the date, just list the time?
Oh, okay.
Of the event.
Yeah.
That would be appreciated, thank you.
Okay. I will do that, and I'll make sure that, um, what I have been doing in the past, I will add that from, in here from now on, I've been trying to send the list of events with flyers to the board on separate emails, but I will make sure to do them both, thank you for that. So, uh, the next slide, I'm really so excited about this, and I'm just putting myself out there a little bit, because whenever you try to have technology work in a big group, in a public setting, sometimes it doesn't happen, but I referenced this, Dana has to listen to me talk about this all the time, so is my team, um, I referenced this, uh, in the last committee, the whole last month, I would love to take credit for it, she hears me say that, too, we were in a meeting with a faith, the faith-based community, and the conversation came up about OCHN having an app, similar to what Blue Cross Blue Shield has, where you can log in, and you keep it on your phone, uh, Peter was wonderful, started investigating it for us to find out what was out there, and really, the, the applications themselves were cost prohibitive for us, they're quite expensive, so he found an alternative, which for me, I think is even better, because you don't have to log in, uh, the way the program works is you scan the code, and it pulls up, uh, a page for OCHN, and it says, "Yeah, Jonathan has it," so it pulls it up, and it gives you the option to save a contact, so you hit Save Contact, it will tell you to scroll down, you hit Create New Contact, and everything you need to know about organization populates into your phone and saves on your contact, contacts the same it would with your family, the same that it would with your friends, the same that it does with primary physicians, so there's, you, um, remove the barrier of having to log in, but even more importantly is, I keep going through all the opportunities with this particular app for us, it, it goes beyond even Dana's original thought of, "Let's make sure everybody has our information on their phone, how do we do that?" So I'm looking back, thinking, we, we will obviously continue to, to pass out brochures, but people take brochures home, they don't keep them with them all the time in case they're in a crisis, so we will be putting the code on our brochures, and actually have this whole plan launched of, you know, in my mind, how do we launch this, so I very targeted populations, we'll do a mass community announcement, we're actually launching it with the Minority Mental Health Event, but then go back in and target specific populations, so when school starts in September, then we'll work closely with the PTA and the PTO groups and the counselors and the schools, and ask them to keep this on their websites, uh, the veterans community, the faith-based, uh, community, seniors, and law enforcement. We did this really just small test with the zoo event, uh, we have it, we're gonna keep it on our floor banner, wherever you go, you're gonna see this QR code, and we're gonna ask people, "Hey, scan if you don't wanna grab the brochure," but we put up the QR code at the zoo event, we haven't done any marketing of this at all, and we checked today, we have seventy-one people who have already saved our contacts on their phone, uh, one of the other probably more broad ideas we have to launch, we do a mass mailing, just a little postcard with our information to about eight thousand homes in Oakland County every quarter, it's based on heat maps that IT provides and demographics of our community, so we will be sending that card to those eight thousand homes, again, telling people that, you know, you need to keep crisis care on your phone as a priority, in the same way you do those family members that are important to your, your physicians, I really think it is going to evolve into something that changes the way people reach out to us and, and connect to us, and so they all have to see me getting really excited about it, but I was thrilled to see seventy-one people saved it, and we haven't really said anything to anyone, it was just one event without, one event with one little flyer sitting on a table that said, "Hey, wanna scan that," so, um, that is my really exciting, happy news that I got to share with you guys today. Any questions? Did it work? Okay. Good, cause, you know, it does make you sweat a little, and you're saying, "Hey, scan this, see what happened," I thought about that, I said, "What are you doing, Burke? You're gonna have them put technology up here and see, and hope that it works," so, thanks for participating.
Thank you, Christine, does anybody have any questions or comments for Christine before we move on? Okay, thank you. Okay, we are going to move on to the, uh, second opportunity for public comment, and we do have a public comment in the room. Okay, and just a reminder, you'll have five minutes for your comment, whenever you're ready.
Is this working? All right, um, as I'm sure you're concerned, I'm, I'm very concerned about the, the efforts to, uh, or re-rework the mental health system and, uh, basically turn it over to insurance companies, uh, but, uh, I want to encourage you to think about this a little differently, as opposed to just an effort to kill the, the Sherkey Bills, a defensive thing, I want you to think of it as an offensive opportunity, because there's a lot of attention focused on mental health now, partly because of what's going on in the legislature, but also because of mass shootings, uh, about, uh, pandemic causing a lot of mental health services concerns, um, also bullying and, uh, what's the word? Bullying and, and self-injury and so on has, has become ano-another continuing concern about, uh, in the schools, and think about this in terms of, not just in what, in terms of what you're doing today, but what you ought to be doing if you're really a full service regarding mental health to the community that you serve, and what I've had it out to you is, uh, is focused particularly on, uh, children's mental health, which is something that we have not done well at all, uh, and, uh, you may have been aware that, uh, Representative Whitford has also had a bill trying to improve the system, which is not quite as radical as Senator Sherkey's, has not gotten a lot of attention, one of the things that's in that is, uh, expanding the scope of who we serve, to go, particularly in mental health, beyond the persons who are homicidal or suicidal, to reach people who really need help, but they're not in that kind of crisis, at least not yet. So we, we should be looking at early intervention, means reach out to people who need help long before they're in crisis, and deal with that, uh, that's important, not only because it means really serving the community, but because it means you catch people before they get a lot worse, they come into the system, or they get help when they need it, they don't get as bad, and hopefully the system costs less, does better, people get recovered, get a recovery. But the other aspect of, of what's in this, this, this talks about two things, one is a, a video that's been recently come out of PBS, some of you may have seen it, but it focuses on mental health in children, very powerful video, it takes a couple hours, but it's a very good video, and it talks about, has a lot of different kids who have had different kinds of problems, and a lot of kids who, who become seriously mentally ill have had problems early in their life, nobody knows it, my daughter had a crisis when she was seventeen, but looking back, we're sure that she was having problems before that, long before that, she might not have been suffered as, as much difficulty if she had been interviewed more, more early, uh, so that's a serious problem, the other part of it is that, uh, the book by, uh, Doctor, and so, which I talked to you about before, this one, talks about the importance of therapy, and really, really says, you always need therapy, sometimes you need medications, that's a serious change in the way of thinking about mental illness, and about who's mentally ill, we've got a problem i-in terms of the general public, thinking that mental illness is only the things that we deal with, is we feel in crisis or seriously ill, and, uh, so I've heard commentators say, "Well, mass shooters aren't mentally ill," because they're not ready, they're not in crisis in terms of, they're not suicidal or homicidal until they become mass shooters, but they've been mentally ill long before that, so we need to start thinking about mental illness or something else, call it something else, it's something that starts early in life, and we need to be catching it early, so early intervention is, is a, a critical issue, it says, let's, let's go beyond, I, I-
Mr. Cummins, I'm, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but the time hasn't passed.
Give me, give me just a little bit. The, uh, you had a list up here of things that, how you, how you're doing things that insurance companies don't do, but it's still, it's kind of what we do to try to engage the community and help us do what we're doing, we need to be looking beyond what we ought to be doing for the community, beyond that, which is early intervention, and particularly getting to children when they need it, and that, that's a major issue, and we need to be doing that across the state, we need to be saying, "This is what we should be doing, this is what we ought to be funding, and if we do it right, it won't cost more, because people won't get as sick," so take that seriously, and, and really pay attention to the book and the video, it really can change your mind.
Thank you. Is there any other public comments? Nothing online? Okay, thank you, uh, moving on to board member comments.
Um, before board member comment, I, Dr. Pozio's responded to Mrs. Newman's question, so I just see that, regarding the district courts, so I don't know if he wants to respond in person, or have the comment read.
Uh, yeah, sure, hi, this is Dr. Pozio, so just wanted to, um, uh, state that there are adult mental health courts, uh, in the forty-fifth, uh, district and fifty-second district, forty-fifth is in Oak Park and fifty-second Troy, uh, and also there is a juvenile justice, uh, mental health court that will be opening, uh, with the Sixth, uh, Circuit Family Division in Pontiac.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Pozio. Okay, any board member comments? Do we wanna just go around the room? Adam?
I'd just like to say thank you for, uh, the presentations tonight, um, especially from Anya and her team, and Christine, um, and her team, it's always, uh, good to hear about the community events where OCHN is making itself known, and like, it's been, um, referenced al-already tonight, that, uh, guide for the services that the network provides is very, very helpful, so thank you.
We can just go around the room. Dr. Hans?
I have no comment, thank you.
So all of the presentations on tonight.
Thank you, and no further comments.
Thank you, and I appreciate all the preparation, I did read through the materials, I just arrived late, but thank you.
No comments, thank you.
Uh, no comments, thank you.
Okay, um, and we can move on to adjournments, can I get a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Malkaya.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we are adjourned.